Need a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is approved. Next item on the agenda, RTI International Contract for CTE High School Planning Services, Appendix P., Dr. Smith.
Yes, would ask the board's approval of the RTI contract for a program audit and CTE, excuse me, high school study visit.
Move for approval?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Exactly what are they going to do?
The first portion would be doing asset assessment for us in terms of what our current course offerings are and how much this parallels what we would make available through the CTE high school. That would give us the opportunity to ensure that what we're offering through the new CTE high school is significantly different than what we're already making available to our high school students. The second portion of this would be conducting some study visits, identifying schools in North Carolina as well as outside of North Carolina that align with our current vision and desire for a CTE high school. So we would actually have the opportunity to go and see and interact with folks who are doing already what we are very interested in doing.
If I had a request to give more details on that, we'll be happy to forward you the line item on that.
Yes, I'm going to request a much more detailed breakout in regards to the study travel side of this.
So you're asking for approval subject to that review?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. And the, right now, the total cost is, if I get to the right lines, fifty-two thousand and something?
That is correct, for this second portion. We're currently working with them in terms of facilitation in the development, the creation of MOUs, governance documents related to the CTE high school. So we have an existing contract. That was not brought to the board because it was underneath that specific threshold which requires that, but because this contract exceeds that and those two contracts exceed that together, we brought to you the details of the first one as well as this one.
Okay.
Is there motion on the floor?
Yes.
Has a motion and a second.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is approved. Item C., 2017-2018 Curriculum Course Guide, Appendix Q., Dr. Smith.
Yes, we would ask the board's approval of our 2017-2018 Curriculum Course Guide.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions?
I would just note for those who aren't aware, we are required to approve this every year. These are simply all the courses that we offer at our schools.
All right. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the call to the audience for non-agenda items once more. I would remind you, your, limit your speaking to three minutes. It does not permit any dialogue between the board and the community. While the board welcomes residents to share their views, the chairman does retain the right to limit discussion on a particular topic when such comments become slanderous or personal in nature. Having said that, I've had two people to sign up. First one, Nancy Buckner.
I would like to read the letter that I mailed the board on the twelfth-
Would you pull the microphone up so it's more in front of your face so we can hear you better?
So I'd like to read to you the letter that I mailed the board on the 25th of November, to which the only response I've received was a three-sentence email sent from Mr. Higgins' iPhone. So, New Hanover County School Board and Superintendent, I write to you as an impassioned former student, asking for your time and careful consideration over the points which I am about to make. I attended public school in New Hanover County until my graduation from John D. Hoggard High School in 2014. As an NHCS student, I was subject to a dress code for the entirety of my academic career. This dress code applies to all students in New Hanover County, but allows elementary school principals to make reasonable variations. This results in no dress code being enforced at the elementary school level because children's bodies are not generally subject to restriction. Once students reach middle and high school, they are no longer allowed to wear weather-appropriate clothing such as tank tops or shorts that end much above the knee. All of a sudden, the dress code is enforced and it is mainly enforced on female students. By enforcing rules that restrict common forms of female dress, the school board is communicating that the female body is a threat. This is stated in their own words by restricting any clothing that can disrupt the educational process or constitute a threat to the health and safety of others. In New Hanover County, a tank top and a pair of leggings are so disruptive to the educational process that they must be outlawed. Furthermore, every rule that is currently listed in the dress code, which is Policy 8520, restricts either profane, gang-related clothing or clothing mainly worn by female students. I find it hard to believe that these are the threats that our public schools face, gang violence and, in their own words, excessively tight-fitting pants. Our dress code is a leftover remnant from a patriarchal past that sought to restrict the female appearance, which only justifies deviant male sexual behavior. By telling older female students that it is obscene to wear tank tops or leggings, it is communicated that a female who is in violation of dress code is a distraction, a threat, and something to either be aroused or disgusted by. The true disruption of learning occurs when students are sent out of class, made to wear embarrassing replacement clothing, and even given out-of-school suspension over dress code-related offenses. A student in a t-shirt does not learn any better than one in a tank top, but a student sent in class will learn much better than one sent to detention to do busy work. You are parents, past teachers, standard setters, regulators, and rulemakers. I understand you have a responsibility to protect and to serve the public schools. You have a lot of power over young minds, but is this the type of message that you want to be communicating? One where women are taught to cover up and men are left free of blame, where children as young as eleven are taught that it is immoral to wear a tank top or athletic leggings? Do you want to be the school board with ways of thinking so backwards that it tries to outlaw skinny jeans? I'm a product of your rules and of your regulations. I have lived thirteen, or through thirteen years, of having my body regulated by you and your predecessors. I have felt shame, I have felt powerless, and I have felt the psychological effects of growing up with such an extreme emphasis on my body. Dress codes that seek to prevent men from distraction reinforce the idea of an uncontrollable male sexual desire. They communicate that there is no point to contain this desire and instead blame women for their natural bodies. While this message may seem innocent in the form of a high school dress code, it normalizes sinister male behavior. I have watched grown men stalk corners just to prey on young college girls who are teenagers and yell obscenities at them. I have seen rapists escape punishment and conviction in news stories broadcast across America. I have read published work in a newspaper from a man declaring that unattractive women wearing yoga pants are a disturbance to his day. I have seen photos of women hauled off of beaches and stripped of their cultural dress. I have seen America elect a man as president who thinks it is excusable to objectify women, very publicly evaluate them on their looks, and utter filthy and violent phrases that he excuses his locker room talk. I am exhausted. The current NHCS dress code claims that the determining criteria governing student dress-
You need to wrap it up, please.
It's the end, it's almost there. The determining criteria governing student dress are clothing items generally accepted and appropriate in a public setting. Yet in the same passage of your dress code, it is stated that all tank tops are strictly prohibited. This is a garment widely worn by all genders and even a favorite style of our First Lady, Michelle Obama. If this does not make the tank top a generally accepted form of public dress, I am not sure what will. But hope lies in our future and the young minds that you have the power to shape, and all I ask is that you take the time to think about how something as simple as the freedom to wear a tank top can shape the future. Thank you.
Anna Schuman?
Hi, Dr. Markley, and the school board. My name is Ann Idelman. I am a co-chair of the Education Committee of our League of Women Voters, Lower Cape Fear, with Nancy McCoy-Fennell. And I'm here tonight just to put in a plug for pre-K. The League of Women Voters is nonpartisan, but we do take stands on issues. We do do a lot of research, and one of our areas of research, one of our focal areas this year has been on the benefits of quality early childhood education. I'm really happy to see that the expansion of pre-K is one of your agenda items for the legislative luncheon. We would wholeheartedly support that. One of the reasons I'm come to talk to you tonight is that Smart Start, which is one of your early childhood community agencies, is putting on their Fourth Annual Wilmington Community Summit. This will be on February the 20th. I believe they've emailed you save-the-date invitations. We would really like to encourage you to attend this event. Michelle Hughes is going to be speaking, and they're hoping to have the movers and shakers in our community who can impact and make a difference in the funding and organizing of increased access to early childhood education. And we would really like our school board to be there because obviously you do have a say in pre-K and this should be important to you. Just a couple of things that you may not be aware of. There was a very exciting study came out from Duke recently, just in the last month or so. They looked at close to three million students, basically all public students in counties or districts that received any kind of Smart Start or, back then it was called Morit Four, it's our NC pre-K that we have now, between 1995 to 2012. So that's a huge study. And what they found is that Smart Start and NC pre-K allocations had a significant positive effect on students' math and reading scores, that's three third grade to fifth grade EOG scores. So they were seeing the positive effect over time and lasting, where many studies previously have shown that there was a fade-out effect pretty much after kindergarten, first grade. So here we're seeing the lasting impact of quality early childhood education. The cumulative effects of that translated into about two to six months of additional learning, which is quite significant over time. They also found that Smart Start reduced the possibility of special education placement by about 10%, but NC pre-K reduced the possibility of special education placement by about 48%. That's huge, and that's a lot of money saved. They both also slightly reduced chances of grade retention all the way through fifth grade, and they looked at the effects for the different socioeconomic groups and found that the effects were positive for all students, but particularly positive or stronger for low-income students, which of course is one of the, those are some of the students we really want to impact. Funding, time is up.
If you wrap-
Sorry?
If you want to wrap it up very quickly, a couple of sentences.
Well, I just wanted to say that funding is always an issue, but there was a recent article that Morit Four funding, Morit Four started in 2001 and was funded largely from the lotteries. There is actually lottery funding, it's just been, the percentages have been changed by the legislators, have been reduced by the legislators, but there is actually funding that was at one time dedicated to pre-K. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair, we have a need for a closed session for two legal issues we need to review.
Okay.
One of them may require us to come back into session after.
All right, so, do we hear a motion? We go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 A13.
Some move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now in closed session. We will adjourn back to the getup.
Uh, my folks, I think we need Rick.
For them to get...
I was told. There you go. Did he hear that? Aaron said aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to read a motion pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 parenthesis A, parenthesis 3, I move for approval of a settlement of a claim against the New Henry County Board of Education and its employees by Dana King, the parent of Williston student Dylan Taylor, in the sum of $599.99, to reimburse her for four days of missed work while caring for Dylan during his recovery from an injury which occurred at school when a metal piece from a door frame became loose and struck him in the head, and return for a full release of liability approved by the board attorney.
You have heard the motion. Do I hear a second? Have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody object? It is approved. Aye. Next item on our agenda is correspondence. Anybody have any correspondence they want to share? Hearing none. Announcements. New Henry County Board of Education members will attend New Henry County Holiday Luncheon on Wednesday, December 21st at noon at the Board of Education Center, which is here. Second, the New Henry County Board of Education will meet for a special meeting on Tuesday, the 21st at 3:00 in the Board Education Center. Only item on the agenda is a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A1 and 115C-402.
That's for a hearing, is it?
Yes.
Yes.
The po— number three, the Policy Committee of New Henry County Board of Education will meet on Tuesday, January 3rd at 4:00 in the Board of Education Center. We didn't appoint it, but Ms. Nichols, Mr. Hayes, and Mr. Wortman, we're going to ask you to be on the Policy Committee, so y'all will have your meeting on the 3rd.
Mr. Chairman, when will the rest of the committee assignments be established?
At the December—I mean, at the January 3rd meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Um, let me see, policy, okay. Next regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for Tuesday, January 3rd, 2017, 5:30 here in the Board of Education Center. New Henry County Board of Education members will attend New Henry County Schools Annual Legislative Luncheon on Thursday, January 5th, 2017, in the Board of Education Center. A meet and greet will begin at 11:30. The meal is what, at 12?
Yes.
At 12, okay. And then finally, New Henry County Board of Education members will attend the Superintendent Student Advisory Meeting on Friday, January 13th at 8:15 a.m. in the Board of Education Center. Anything else?
Is that for all board members?
You're welcome.
Those are— everyone is welcome. Just let me know, because we have to host it, we will. They wanted to hear more about college counseling, so we've asked the Director of Counseling to come to that meeting. That's the— remember last year, we decided we would hold four of those meetings?
Right.
And invite them to the last meeting to present to the board.
Okay.
Do we need to plan to poll the board for—
Retreats?
—for retreat dates?
Uh, yeah, we do. We actually do need to talk about that. There was some discussion about doing it—
After the meeting with the students on the—
Yes, there was. There was a discussion about doing it on the 13th.
If you check your calendars, when we meet on the 3rd, we can probably finalize those dates.
Okay.
That would be good. Pardon?
One of the dates, okay. Yeah, one of the dates, just—
What day of the week is the 13th on?
13th is a Friday.
Uh-oh. Friday the 13th?
Ah, maybe to be lucky for us.
Get too quick.
Maybe to be lucky. All right, so anything else to come before this board?
I move we adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second. Anybody object? All is favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank y'all.
Merry Christmas, everybody.